I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we embark on a new school year, we seek your guidance and blessings. Bless our dedicated school board members with wisdom, empathy, and vision. Grant them the ability to make decisions that prioritize the well-being and education of every student. May their discussions be filled with respect, understanding, and unity. We pray for a year of growth and discovery where teachers inspire the students' floors. May our schools be havens of learning, creativity, and safety. Grant us the strength to overcome challenges and the grace to celebrate achievements, both big and small. May parents find reassurance in their children's educational journey. In the spirit of cooperation, may this school year be a testimony to the power of community working together. Guide us as we strive for excellence. Amen.
Will call please? Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Groen? President? Mrs. Strick? Mrs. Zemcheek? Karen? And we are the public comments section of the agenda. We have some public comments tonight. Before we get started with those, just as a reminder to everybody, we haven't had public comments in a while. Can everybody?
No.
This one's on?
That's better.
We haven't had public comments in a while, so I'm just going to go ahead and read this. It's only a board agenda, as I mentioned earlier. The Pompacity Public School Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of involving members of the public in board meetings. The board has established guidelines that govern public participation in board meetings necessary to conduct its meetings and to maintain order. After checking in with the board clerk, individuals or groups wishing to speak during the public comment period must provide the following information in writing in order to speak for the board: Name and address of the individual; the agenda, or, I'm sorry, the agenda action items the individual wishes to address; the organization the individual represents or is affiliated with, if applicable. Anyone who would like to speak to the board during the public comment period of the meeting must check in with the board clerk at least 15 minutes prior to the start of the board meeting. There will be a form available that they will need to fill out and return to the board clerk before they can be heard by the board. Participants must be recognized by the president or other presiding officer and must preface their comments with an announcement of their name and group affiliation, if applicable. Comments by the speaker must relate to an item on the meeting agenda. Generally, participants shall be limited to the comments at a maximum of three-minute duration unless altered by the presiding officer with the approval of the board. All public comments during any regular meeting shall be limited to no more than 15 minutes. No participant may speak more than once during a single meeting. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question one member individually. And Lori will be keeping time for us time, so I don't have those lists with you.
And we have five. First one is John O'Neill.
John O'Neill, if you could come up to the microphone. I believe the microphone should be on for you. Please help me out.
Can you hear me? Are we good?
I can hear you.
Try that one.
I can't because I'm close.
Are we good?
No.
Still not?
Maybe you need to turn it up. Just turn down.
How about now? Now?
You can do it longer.
We get closer?
Get it louder.
Get it a little closer?
Get louder.
Closer test.
It's hard to see through that foggy window.
Are we getting closer? Closer. Alright, there it is. Okay.
That doesn't count in your treatment.
Time's up. Hello. I'm John O'Neill, a 1990 graduate of Pohai and 94 graduate of O H U. My wife, Mary Ann, and I have a son who graduated this past May and a daughter and son currently attending Pohai. I farm with my dad in Osage County where we O'Neills have farmed for over 125 years. My business partners and I have spent 30 years starting, building, and selling biotechnology companies. Our focus was in identifying unique bacteria, studying the compounds they produce, and selecting the best bacteria to address problems in production agriculture. We work with dairy, beef, poultry, and swine producers in areas ranging from water control to waste management to intestinal health of the animals. We were very successful having sold two companies. We have a third company still growing and are putting together plans for a fourth company. The two companies we sold each had over 50 employees. We had multiple people working on different parts of the same problems, and it was very important for everyone to work together to help solve those problems. We hire the very best personnel we can find, scientists and salespeople with backgrounds ranging from microbiologists to geneticists to veterinarians to statisticians. The tangibles are easy to identify: their education degrees, grades, work experience, etc. The intangibles are harder to identify, but extremely important on how to determine how the individual will interact with coworkers, customers, and farmers. We look for individuals who can form a connection with coworkers and customers to understand the problems they are facing and how our products can help. We look for individuals who can make good choices in how they allocate their time to the required duties they need to perform each day. We look for individuals with coping skills, as their research will be questioned and critiqued, and they must be able to deal with questions and reply with thoughtful responses. We look for creativity, as they will be developing solutions to problems on the farm which may have never been solved before. We look for individuals with compassion, as we from time to time work with farmers who are dealing with difficult health problems on their farms, and their livelihoods may depend on our ability to help address their problems. We look for individuals with curiosity to look for a better way to solve a problem. We look for individuals with confidence to stand up for what they are working on and know we recognize they are putting their best effort forward in solving the problem. We look for individuals who can collaborate, as our team members work with coworkers, outside veterinarians, nutritionists, and feed companies to solve complex problems, and they need to be able to listen and accept everyone's input to have the best chance in solving the problem again. If you've done your research, you recognize the topics I just discussed are the eight core competencies of Go Noodles social-emotional learning curriculum for grade school. These are the intangibles we look for in candidates we hire for our companies. My experience in managing large teams is that employees with these skills are successful. I feel comfortable stating that these skills help children be good friends, good classmates, and good students.
I'm sorry if we have that. I've wasted your time, but thank you for speaking with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Volkers, and he would like to speak to the agenda of 6.3E. If you could state your name and...
Yes, my name is Gary Volkers, and I'd like to speak to the same issue as the last speaker. I'd like to address the purchase of licenses for the Super Noodle S E L curriculum software. Based on my reading on the social-emotional learning, I understand that S E L is designed to help children respond correctly to emotional or social issues they encounter in the school system or in life outside the school. For example, how should I view myself, or how should I interact with my fellow student or sibling? What my concerns is, how is the correct response determined? Who decides on what basis? These are moral and ethical questions. Another way of saying that is, these are religious questions with religious answers. I do not believe that the parents of the city intend for their children to be receiving their religious instruction in the public school system. I ask you to vote against funding for the Super Noodle S E L program and to remove any S E L programs already in place in the public school system. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. The third speaker is Kim Mellor, and she would like to address the same issue, 6.3E S E L curriculum.
6.3E?
Yes, yes. And you could state your name and if you're with a group.
No, I'm just... Anyway, I wanted to focus on the equity aspect of the social-emotional learning. The equity aspect is based on the equal outcome instead of just equality. And Super Noodle, I noticed, leverages the best practices of CASL, PBIS, restorative practice protocols, and its own regulation behavior guidance. These particular entities focus a lot on equity or equal outcome for every student. But I don't believe the Christ-falling family where God's Word through Jesus Christ properly interpreted in full context as the standard will absolutely be excluded from teachings of S E L. We're all created people in God's image as unique individuals with specific gifts and talents. This is a pretty level playing field. Individualism will never comport with equity. Equity is equal outcome. We cannot expect the individual to succeed on their own uniqueness or be challenged to excel to a higher standard if they are forced to perform to the standard of the lowest common denominator, equity. All laws and regulations rule the guidelines, such as what S E L would do, regulate behavior in some capacity. They create boundaries, some are good and some are not, depending upon the standard which they are measured. When we create the boundaries based on anything outside the true standard of the one true God, we will fail. We fail our children and adults they will become by the indoctrination of some human-created idea of utopia. On its face, I know S E L is not attempting to do that. However, this is the problem. The real intention of these programs gets lost in the fluff of words, the sales pitch that sounds so good by a segment of the population that is not righteous but self-righteous. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nathan Volkers, and he would like to address the same issue, 6.3E S E L curriculum.
6.3E?
Yes, yes. And you could state your name and if you're with a group.
Oh, public servants, my name is Nathan Volkers, and I am the vice chairman of the K-County Republican Party. I'd like to thank you for your service as you are tasked with representing the parents and all the voters of our district. This comes with responsibility and a duty to act in our best interest and as we direct with the powers that we have delegated to you. Thank you also to all the community members that cared enough to show up tonight and let your voice be heard. I'm addressing you tonight about the purchase of social-emotional learning curriculum software. At first glance, it seems to be a nice thing to encourage kids to be kind and handle their emotions, but upon deeper inspection, it presents serious issues to us and the children of our community. It traces its history back to very questionable origins and is closely aligned with human standards to create good citizens, good global citizens, not moral, knowledgeable, and competent United States citizens, our initiatives like this, the reason our country is crumbling around us. S E L, as presented on the C A S E L dot org website, is not just a component of curriculum, but an entire perspective on learning other people and the entire world. It teaches that the most important characteristics of other people are their backgrounds and identities, not, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "the content of their character." Compromises praise while objective standards are discouraged. Children are immersed in controversial topics such as social justice, D E I, and critical consciousness. S E L also relies on constant assessments that collect large amounts of data on each pupil and program them into the politically correct answer on controversial topics. It is based on and perpetuates the religion of secular humanism, and using child psychology not even practiced by a psychologist in a clinical setting undermines all parents' rights to teach their children the values that they hold dear. Unfortunately for this system, the only objective and consistent basis for treating others with kindness and respect is actually found in the written word of the creator of this universe. He has told us to love God, love our neighbors, even our enemies. To undermine his basis is to leave little ones astray, which is a very serious thing, a millstone offense, and only leaves a house of cards that collapses under the slightest of pressure. S E L is claimed to be necessary in order for children to be able to learn, and just when did this come into widespread usage? Were children not able to learn 100, 50, or even 20 years ago? It actually seems as if they could learn better back then. I would remind you all of what we just said a few minutes ago. I pledge allegiance, that includes protection of, to the flag of the United States of America, not the U N or any other group, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd like to say.
Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you. The final speaker is Janice Gaddis, who would like to address the 6.3E S E L curriculum. Ms. Gaddis, if you could state your name in the microphone, and if you're with a group, and your time will start when you start speaking. Thank you.
My name is Janice Gaddis. I'm not with a group, and I'm speaking to on the social-emotional learning. I don't have a speech written, so I'm speaking from my heart. I have two grandchildren and another one up on the way, and I know that this kind of learning is going to go from school to school to school, not only in Pompacity, but all over the United States. They don't believe in it. I've watched the videos and listened to the words. On the first appearance, it looks like it's cute, you know, just kind of a cute thing, but I don't feel like the words are too cute. I feel like it's going to roll down the hill, and the teachers will feel the impact of what they're learning, and then it's going to go home. And the parents, the parents are the ones that should be teaching their children the social and emotional aspect of all of this, and I saw not much learning in it at all. We send our kids to school to learn? No. What I was seeing on these videos is not learning, and I agree with so many of the others that spoke, and they have key words in what they said. Programming is a big one, and that's how I feel that these kids are going to be taught is programming. I don't like it, and I could ask that you all really think about it, or do you would put something like that in the school system? Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Gaddis. I want to move on to item number three, which is reports of presidential board discussion. Mr. Dent is here to give us a college remediation report, and then after that will be overview of child nutrition program. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Shane Dent, principal of Pompacity High School, and I am here to present the college remediation data to the board for the class of 2021. As some of you know, board members, I'm sure you're well aware, the data is a little bit old. That's the way it works. When the kids graduate and then they go to college, and then we get the data back afterwards so that we can kind of track our first-time college students, how they're doing at school and so forth. We've talked about this, and we'll talk a little bit about the end, but first-time college students is the important key word there. This does not include our students that participate in concurrent enrollment, because obviously they don't have, they're not allowed to participate in remediation if they're in concurrent. They have to meet those standards. So this is the data that we'll just kind of take a peek at. We like to look at kind of us and where the state is. It's kind of big picture, high in the sky kind of data, but it does have some use for us. So you can see here kind of where Pohai relates to the state as far as the percentages go. You can see that we're performing a little bit better and a lot better in some areas than the state average. Some comparables, this is data that we've used in the past for consistency. I also have a slide here at the end that shows kind of a three-year trend, so I wanted to keep those numbers the same. You can see where Pompacity, Enid, Stillwater, and Choctaw are with this current year. A lot of drops across the state. We're seeing an increase everywhere in students getting access to concurrent. That's having a big impact on this number. We're also seeing students that are participating, getting A C T scores, trying to achieve things that are coming earlier and earlier for our kids. Our county data is on this slide, so you can kind of see where Pompacity relates to New Kirk, La Guella, and Tonka Wau. You can see some of the numbers across the board, and they're all over the place. And this is something that's really fascinating to me, is over the last couple of years, I've seen a drastic change, some of these numbers going up and down. The number of kids first time is going down. Obviously concurrent is a factor. Here are the last three years. I can't take any credit for this. Maybe Dr. Hawkins is in, I believe she was 21, so we can give her a pat on the back on that data. But you can see that the numbers of students that are participating in remedial courses from Pohai for the first time has gone down considerably from 2019, where we had 23% of our students in English, and now only 8.4. That was a drastic decline in that. You can see the other numbers as well. Math, almost 28.7% down to 9.6. And then reading, reading went up a little bit, about two tenths of a point there, and then dropped back down. So we're showing good signs in this, and we're also, I'll talk a little bit about those numbers. So for the 2020, we had 113 students that were factored into this equation. They were the first time kids that hadn't taken any college before. The 21 number was 83. Now, we still have about the same number of students going to college after they leave Pohai, but the difference is we've got a lot more that are starting to go to concurrent, and that trend started several years ago before me, and I'm proud to start, or at least try to keep that going. Some information behind all the numbers. One is, again, like I talked about, 83 in that 21 class. Obviously, we had about 211 that went on to college that we know of, and those are in-state numbers. Those don't include kids that are outstate because we don't have the data on them. Some of the things that come into play is how they use this. For example, on the A C T, we were actually talking about this earlier, Mr. Murray and I, and Dr. Hawkins, about the science score. So a science score, a lot of the junior colleges, N O C or et cetera, don't have a remedial science class, so if a student doesn't score well on science, they take a remedial reading class. So kind of strange, but that's kind of how some of those numbers work. But of course, at the high school, what we're doing is with, we have this data, it helps us look to see what's our concurrent enrollment? Is that number going up? Are we serving our kids? Or are kids getting prepared before they even leave the high school? And then finally, what are we doing to raise those A C T scores so that all kids will be able to take on-level courses when they need to college? And so the reading plus programs, A C T math workshops, and of course, our curriculum studies. Thanks.
Do you have any questions? This is for...
Yeah, I thought, you mentioned that you had 211, and it's all in-state, nothing outstate. Is it important? What schools? Because I know all the schools don't offer them. What schools actually offer remedial courses in the state?
In the state?
Yeah.
Quite a few. It's changing. It's changing. Some of these schools, we're starting to see, for example, I'll use N O C because it's very common for our students. They're beginning to change some things in state with the regions starting looking at like college algebra. I'll use it as a perfect example. For those of us, I remember just, you know, me as a simple history teacher, I had to take college algebra. A wife or a nurse had to take college algebra. Now, if you are a non-stem major, you don't have to take college algebra in college. And so if I am a non-stem major, I want to major in dance or early childhood education as a non-stem. You could take a math official's class. And so that class would not require necessarily the same score as a student that wanted to take college algebra with that. They call it algebra for STEM. So they're changing some of those at the university level, but also plays into that. So that's an excellent question. Not only are we doing our part, but the regions are doing their part to change as well and looking at kids. More kids are going to college, and they want to make sure that all the kids are in the STEM field.
But are any offering science? Because you've got zeros all over the place.
Right, right, right.
Most of the schools are offering remedial science.
No, so none of them are.
Any other questions? Robin says he would take science class. All right. What did you say?
Good man. Thank you.
Mr. Shane Dent?
I'll hit the end. We'll go all the way to the end. Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. About every four or five years, I get to present our program and everything, and I just kind of wanted to do a brief overview of what we do and how we do it, and I don't like to use the word massive, but the massive size of our program. Very large. So of all the programs, we participate in eight different types of programs. The National Breakfast Program, the National School Lunch Program, the After-School Snack Program, Summer Mills Program. We have private contracts, we have campus catering, bills on wheels, and we also participate at the elementary tree sites on nutrition education. So as you can see, we're pretty varied. We have a staff of around 70. If we're fully staffed, we have 57 kitchen staff and servers to deliver in the warehouse, six shared staff at the elementary tree sites, one sub, five managers, one federal applications staff in technology, one nutrition analysis business manager and assistant to that, and then myself. So quite a large staff as well. An overview of our program, we do an estimated 5,500 mils a day, close to 910,000 a year, which is really close to a million a year. So the more days we have at school, the more mils we serve. We have an estimated budget of 3.2 million to 4.3. That 4.3 includes our fund balance. Total revenue that we look at every year is 2.8 million. Our fund balance this past year was 1.1 million, but it's a little high just simply because of some federal monies we received at the beginning. Our payroll runs around 1.5 million. Other expenses we have are 1.3 million, like I said earlier. 12 staff members, I mean 70 staff members, I think we have 12 right now, and then 70 staff members and then 12 serving sites, and then we also operate a warehouse and a delivery system. The financial information we look at, we have the funding sources, the federal, state, and local funding. Expenses, we run payroll and associated costs, food and supplies, transportation, utilities, equipment and improvements, all come out of our budget that we run. Our fund balance, as I mentioned, the operating account is 1.1 million, and fund balance is very, very important to us. This is not our profit from the year before. It is what we have earned over the past 33 years. And so it is a little bit different, because I know it looks like a huge number when you're looking at our numbers. When I started in '89, '90, and they told me that child nutrition was self-sufficient, they didn't tell me that it was self-sufficient if you don't count later. And so I found out after my first year, we were a half a million in the hole, and so I was charged by the board at that time to make that work or move on. And so quickly, we...
at the elementary science on nutrition education. So as you can see, we're pretty varied. We have a staff of around 70. If we're fully staffed, we have 57 kitchen staff and servers to deliver in the warehouse, six shared staff at the elementary sites, one sub, five managers, one federal application staff in technology, one nutrition analysis business manager and assistant to that, and then myself. So quite a large staff as well. An overview of our program, we do an estimated 5,500 mils a day, close to 910,000 a year, which is really close to a million a year. So the more days we have at school, the more mils we serve. We have an estimated budget of 3.2 million to 4.3. That 4.3 includes our fund balance. Total revenue that we look at every year is 2.8 million. Our fund balance this past year was 1.1 million, but it's a little high just simply because of some federal monies we received at the beginning. Our payroll runs around 1.5 million. Other expenses we have a 1.3 million, like I said earlier. 12 staff members, I mean 70 staff members, I think we have 12 right now, and then 70 staff members and then 12 serving sites, and then we also operate a warehouse and a delivery system. The financial information we look at, we have the funding sources, the federal, state, and local funding. Expenses, we run payroll and associated costs, food and supplies, transportation, travel, utilities, equipment and improvements, all come out of our budget that we run. Our fund balance, as I mentioned, the operating account is 1.1 million, and fund balance is very, very important to us. This is not our profit from the year before, it is what we have earned over the past 33 years. And so it is a little bit different, because I know it looks like a huge number when you're looking at our numbers. When I started at 8990, and they told me that child nutrition was self-sufficient, they didn't tell me that it was self-sufficient if you don't count later. And so I found out after my first year, we were a half a million in the hole. And so I was charged by the board at that time to make that work or avoid it. And so quickly, we haven't lost any money, and we paid our own way since 1992. And I feel like that's a credit to our great staff that we've had along the years. So when we look at that fund balance, we're looking at 34 years or 33 years of doing what's right with the finances and operating. The state allows us to retain a certain amount of our fund balance, and they've kind of waited the last couple of years, but next year it'll go into effect with our activity fund. We also do the catering for the meals on wheels, and we operate with about $35,000 in that account. Just to give you a few ideas of how we're funded, federal, last year we received 1.9 million in federal funds, and state, $25,000, Lester Hart's thinking, and then local from students and adults, we're looking at 965, almost a million dollars. Now, a lot of people don't understand, and I was in a meeting last year with an agency, and they're saying, now, you get a certain amount a day for students for mils. Absolutely not, we do not. We only get the reimbursement for the students that eat with us and take a reimbursable meal. So we don't get a certain cash amount to spend, it's not a budgetary item. We live or we die by the chicken strip, and that's what we got to do. So participation is huge to us and very important, and we have to make sure that it works. Once we have met the USDA regulations, then we submit a claim, and then we're reimbursed for it. And the word reimbursement is a very good word because it covers the cost of the meal. And so we are regulated by the federal government, USDA, the Farm Bill. The Farm Bill's a $13 billion bill a year, and we're part of that Farm Bill. And then the state, the State Department of Education regulates us and audits us, and the Department of Human Service, we participate in all of their stuff. And then local, of course, district administration, school board, and then the Kent County Health Department, and then the others that regulate us, our Department of Agriculture. So I have a lot of people that I have to make happy on a regular basis. So purchasing guidelines, we belong to what we call Campus Smart Purchasing Group. It's through US Foods this year, premier. Eight years ago, myself and another director from Edmond formed a buying group, our purchasing group with just us, Edmond and Stillwater, and this past year, we hit 60 school districts. So that's a big deal, because now those school districts around us pay the same price that Edmond and Honka and Midwest City and Bell City and that area pay for food, which really helped a lot of small schools. We follow all guidelines set out in Section 5.10 of the work policy. There are very strict qualifications on purchasing. All purchases are reviewed annually by outside auditors and on a regular basis by the State Department of Education and USDA auditors. So we're under the micro strip of law. But the most important thing is we want our kids to be happy. Well, the most important is we got to keep them happy. But we want to serve effective, delicious meals with a lot of variety. And so to do that, we are charged to meeting meal patterns and components for four different groups. We have a separate meal pattern for pre-K. If they weren't a separate school, then they would fall into the pre-K, K through 5. Let me give you an example. Since they are a separate school, they're not allowed to have flavored milk. So when you go to the pre-K, they can't have chocolate milk. If they were in an elementary school with the other students, they would get chocolate milk. So if you ever have a parent say why our pre-K gets chocolate milk, that's why. Because they have a separate set of guidelines that we have to follow just for that site, and it's our only site that isn't offer versus serve, which I'll explain. And then K through 5 have their guidelines, 6 through 8 has theirs, and 9 through 12 has theirs. So we're set up pretty good for that. What we're charged to do on our nutrient standards is we got to track and meet the upper and lower limits of calories, saturated fats, sodium standards, and if you could put on my C my note, they are unreal expectations. Renal patients cannot meet those expectations. And I've worked really hard over the years in Washington with the legislators on these expectations, and they've been derailed recently. So trans fats and zero fat, zero trans fats, we have to do all of that. And in addition to that, we have to offer, I know this is a lot, but we have to offer about five groups, grains, meat, meat alternate, what in the world is a meat alternate? Well, that could be like tofu, or yogurt, or cheese, or something like that. Fruit, vegetables, and within the vegetables, we have to offer five subgroups in the order of red, orange, green, legume, starchy, and other. And so if you say green beans, that is another, that is another green. So we have to offer more red, orange than any other, twice as much as the others, and then we offer milk. A student does not have to take all those, but they have to take specific ones. Quickly looking at our calories, that we always like the calories and the sodium for grades K through 5, 350 to 500, for a meal, 400 to 550 for K, 6 through 8, and 450 to 600. For example, today, I picked up a salad at Wendy's, and it's a Cobb salad, 897 calories. So a salad by itself from a fast food restaurant would not qualify for a full meal in child nutrition. So that's where our creativity goes through. If you look at the sodium requirement, and I'm going to move on really fast, but less than 540 milligrams of sodium. I spent a lot of time on this, and right now, a hamburger from McDonald's exceeds that. So we have to get very, very, very creative, and I think we've done a good job as a program. We have the offer versus serve. So we offer all five components, grains, meats, fruit, vegetable, milk. Students may decline two of the five components, but they must select at least a half cup of a vegetable, fruit, or a combination of both. So if you see a picture on Facebook where they're showing an apple, a vegetable, or again, a carton of milk, they said, this is all my child got, received at school, no, that's all they picked. And that does count as reimbursed milk, but that's all they picked. We can fill every slot, every tray if they took everything that was offered to them. And a lot of times, I spend a lot of time explaining that. Our reimbursement rates for those who qualify for free, reduced, and paid meals, the free is based on the family household size and the family income, and we do handle that process for the entire district. We also use those numbers to determine a lot of our funding, including Title I and weighted average for the state. But we get $2.28 for a free breakfast, $1.98 for a reduced lunch. For a paid student, we get $0.38, and then for lunch, we get $4.25. Reduced, the student pays 40, and we get $3.85. And then if we do a full-price paid lunch, student would get 40 cents. So that's where you see the local money coming into that. Our prices this year, which you approved last month, are very low. And so you can get a whole meal with at least five components on it for $3.25 at the high school, $3 at East and West, and $3 at our elementary schools. One of the things that we worked on four or five years ago, I think it was in 2017, we had to create an unpaid meal policy. This is, we were instructed to do it by the USDA and the State Department of Education. And that's when students who do not complete an application, do not communicate with us in any way, and we still continue to feed them, and so that is the policy right there. There is a $30 threshold, but I will tell you this much, this year we ended with over $20,000 in unpaid meal policy that we pretty much has got stuck with. And there's always the question of taking trades away and stuff like that. We have a very, very long process for that, and kind of, if you look at 4B there, effects, efforts to collect delinquent or bad debt will be handled by a specific tenant site who sent first and second letter. The specific tenant site will make phone calls to the household. If nothing happens, if no resolution is met, site principals will contact the household. No resolution, a notice of adverse action, potential collection of mail to the household. If nothing happens, and 14 days after that notice is sent, all mills and student will be suspended until resolution is met. That is if the family chooses to do absolutely nothing. And at that point, we do suspend, I think we suspended 16 last year. Not very many, because if a family will just talk to us, complete an application, do something, then we will work with them. But we rarely ever, ever really do anything, but I talk to the families, find a thing to get them to understand. Majority of the time, they do not talk to us. So that's a big deal. But I thought I did a lot of this with fun facts, as we serve an estimated 710 cartons of milk a year. There are over 100 menu, 100 menu, it seems like it, 100 menu items at the elementary schools. We do a four-week cycle there, and I gave you a copy of that cycle on your desk there. Our participation rate at the elementary site is over 90%, which I think is the highest in the state of Oklahoma. The most popular menu is Chicken Day, which we know about, and there's been many songs written about it. The high school offers six concepts with 120 different combinations of menu items, and you have that map on your desk. Just a fun fact, we're not serving watermelon much this year, but when we do serve watermelon at the elementary, we go through 150 watermelon a day. You all see us trying to store that, but we get three deliveries a week. We bought an entire farm's watermelon in the last five years out in Oklahoma. During the winter, when we can't get much fresh food, it's not unusual for us to go through more than 100 number 10 cans over the bait ones each day. And our transport vehicle delivers over 40 carts, it picks up over 40 carts a day. That's pretty massive, and I'm almost finished. But these are the new concepts that we have at high school. We have emutro tacos, bowls, on the fly, and chicks. All of those are geared towards high school students, keeping them on campus. Just very important to us, because there's not a lot of good will do by leaving campus. So the emutro taco line is, you have a base of either taco shell, tostada shell, a burrito wrap, or salad, and you build on five different proteins, eight different toppings, and 10 different sauces. The bowl line is one side does taco bowl, the nacho bowl, the other side does Italian, Asian bowls. And then one of the reasons I created those two is because we're having, what we call the retro mark was we weren't having very many students come into that room. And so by doing this, we were able to triple the amount of students coming in each day. And then the on the flies, the grabbing the dough, we're adding a pizza concept this year if we ever get full of staff. And then the chicks is the most popular line, and chicks is abbreviation in the restaurant business for chicken. So it's chicken every day, chicken and fries every day, lots of fries. We go through 35 pieces of fries a day at the high school. It's a lot of food. And then successes we have had, we've been self-sufficient here since 1992. And we affect, affect, affect and affect almost every student in the district on databases. We've been recognized several times over the years as the top program in the country, and we served in person throughout the entire COVID without a break. And I'm so proud of our wonderful staff for doing that. Some of our challenges, staffing, last week, we were 19 positions down. We are 13 today, and we keep working. We ended the year with 10 down. Supply chain, I'm always dealing with those issues constantly, all the time, dealt with several today. And then we do student contact based perks, because we have a fixed budget, where we have fixed expenses. And when we have staff that were paid, we have no students, then it hurts us. And so, any questions? That was faster than Adam ever thought I could do.
Real quick.
Yes.
10 years ago, when Michelle Obama put her EDA down, since then, has there been some relief for you all on your requirements from USDA or whoever sent all your requirements? She tied you up.
They're more stringent than they were.
Even worse than her days?
Well, the Secretary of Agriculture was now, was the Secretary of Agriculture then. So he brought back all the changes. We had a relief of four years without the heavy regulations, but they're all back. In fact, one of the big regulations that I've talked to leaders about is they're thinking about doing away with chocolate milk next year. And so we'll probably go for 700 and something thousand to maybe 30,000 consumption. And it sounds like a really, well, what's the big deal? Well, that's how I control the calories, and my menus is through chocolate milk consumption. It's one of the best ways. And then the sodium will be graded, is graded up this year, so we had to remove some menu items because we couldn't do it, and then next year it takes a bigger step to where. What they failed to do was consider natural occurring sodium in foods. And so many of those things, when we looked at those milligrams, their purpose was to drive us to scratch cooking. Well, what happened is they drove us away from scratch cooking. And we're one of the few schools in the state that still scratch cooks about 30% of it. And so what happens is now you have to buy products that have pedal that sodium removed from it, and so it's called deep processing, and so we have to go through more processed items than in the past. But I've put together a pretty neat plan of how we can make it work, and we tried to actually work really well, and we're kicking it up here this year to where I found a flavoring company, and then like at the high school, majority of protein, and so especially for the new lines, not for the chicks line, for the new lines. And so when I start from very little, then I can control the amount of sodium that's across. But processed is really the only way now that you can lead the reduced sodium. And I have talked to our legislators about this, but it is a USDA directive. So they lost, according to their numbers, 2 million mils a day through the new regulations, and they will be losing more.
Is that because they don't have people like you who are efficient, doing it right by?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say, yeah, it's hard. It's hard unless you have a culinary background, experienced culinary background, then it's really hard to come up with that. And then people always say, why don't we have really nice restaurants in Honka? And I'll say, because we don't have the skill set. And I've been working with career tech on that skill set too as well, because we need people to come in and have that skill set. But most likely, if someone gets that skill set, they're not going to work for child nutrition. They're going to work for...
They're going to leave the state.
Well, or they're going to use that skill set at maybe like the Country Club or another restaurant. And so that's a vicious cycle that we get into, that we're challenged. And so we were talking earlier, my first 25 years, if we replaced two people a year, it was really a big deal. And now if we don't replace 30% of our staff every year, it's not normal. So we will be looking at replacing 30% of our staff this year. And the skill sets just, I mean, they're great people, they're hard workers, but knowing what to do is really hard. And there's all these sessions, I attended some this year with culinary chefs and things, but what everybody's trying to do, but it does take time. And it's not what they thought it would be. It was unintended consequences.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you, we appreciate what you do for us.
I remember when you were here, we, you know.
Before.
That you are having a hard time feeding the football players with that little bit of meat.
Yeah.
They're hungry.
Yeah, the two ounces of protein that they have is true. And we kind of ignored that a little.
Because they need that, you know, they're working late. They need to eat, and they work hard, I mean, they work hard on the field, they need support.
When you increase the protein, you increase the fat, and you increase the sodium, so you have to find a way to give the protein and not... And sometimes we just put a little bit of that in there, because we believe, we truly believe our students can't learn if they're hungry. I can't, you know, I need to eat dinner, and I'm having a hard time paying attention to my presentation.
Well, I can't attention at all, and I know that it was...
That's a lot of interesting, we are the largest restaurant.
Thank you.
And number four, superintendent of course, is going to have more discussion, staffing
Great job, Jeff. He did tell me I was going to be a 45-minute deep dive into child nutrition, and I'm not doing that. He was just going to pull up a chair, turn on the lights. Say it all started back in 1960. Hey, it is a great day to be a Wildcat. This is, if you read my memo this weekend, it was, I mean, I'm so fired up for this week. We've got new teachers coming back, starting tomorrow, we will have the Big Blue Band, our cheerleaders out front, 7:30, to welcome our 64 new certified employees coming into the building. Now, I do have to disclaim... Now, I do have to disclaim, I was a little optimistic when I typed sixty-four. It's technically sixty-three because we do need to hire one more prepaid teacher. And I just thought, if I wished it into the universe, we would hire a teacher today. But I don't, I'm looking at the universe, she's shaking her head no. So apparently the universe is not liking you right now. So I just kind of wanted to highlight a few of the positions we've hired. I think it'd probably been easier the positions we didn't hire for this school year on this slide. But as you can see, we've got a mix of administrators, general education requirements, special education, behavior interventionist, therapist, all the different things that we've got that make this school run at home each year. You know, I'm going to choose to look at this last half-full and say that with the sixty-four new employees we're coming, we have a great opportunity to grow a new dedicated workforce that's going to love. Why, why would they pick Punk City? Just breaking down the numbers, thirty of those sixty-four, sixty-three are from Punk City. Thirty-four are coming to us from outside the Punk City zip code. And I'm saying outside of Punk City zip code, it's like outside of even like Little Trump Wall, New Kirk. I thought it was interesting, we did, we're able to get three from Kansas. And if you know how Kansas pays their certified staff, they must have been really upset with Kansas. We just had family come back here and we don't know yet. Three from California, all unrelated. I checked the last name. That's all I'm going off of is they didn't have any of the same last name. So there may be a family interest there, but I don't, don't have any of that information at this time. So I think that was interesting. And then other communities we have Representative Laura Duncan, Glenn Co. Four from Stillwater, three from Weatherford, two of those from Weatherford are husband-wife team. Anthony got to round out some of the communities that these individuals are coming to, to join our staff. Obviously, this is going to be a district challenge with us because that represents twenty percent of our certified workforce will be granted to our district this year. Just highlighting the issues we're facing with the teacher shortage. Now, I do want to credit our principals and our HR director and their team for getting our positions filled before the start of school. A lot of districts across the state of Oklahoma can't say that. So I do think that one of the positives in that is we will start the school year with adults in those classrooms, the best adults we had available to us that applied to keep going to start school. I think one of our challenges, talking to our administrators in the spring and summer was one of the identifying challenges we have is our culture and climate in our district. And just something that we need to be mindful of as we start this school year and how we support these brand-new teachers is getting them invested in some internal groups in the buildings that they're going to be working with, getting them in peer groups, positive peer groups, you know, starting to make friends, get that connection to the building, the facility that you're working at. But then also, we need to be working on how we get them plugged into our community, whether that is, you know, through church or social clubs or community organizations. I think that also is going to help our new teachers find that Punk City is a very accepting community and is ready to embrace these new folks coming into our community. Other things that I've challenged our administrators to do, our directors, is to make sure that we're frequently checking in on these people. It's one thing that start of school and then we just get busy trying to make sure that we're doing our job, that we kind of forget to check in on our brand-new teachers. We have new mentorship programs planned this year with the State Department of Education. We've also had some great practices internally in Punk City Public Schools for our mentor teachers to go. But also just our administrators checking in, offering encouragement, asking them how their day went, how things are going, how that lesson worked, if there was some sort of difficult interaction, you know, just helping them know that they're not alone as we progress through the school year. Again, this is all stuff that we're just trying to help bolster the culture and climate, make sure that our people feel supported and encouraged. One thing that I want to work with and talking with our directors is I think that these individuals bring a wealth of expertise and experience. They've come from other communities. They've either graduated from other schools, they've worked in other schools. And I'd like to know what their schools are doing. Now, we're not going to do this right away, but I think later this fall, get with these individuals and see, you know, what's working in our school district that you really enjoy. And what did you have in your school district that you thought that we're either missing the opportunity or dropping the ball on as a district moving forward? So we're going to be tasking our principals, directors, and me myself on getting panel these individuals together. I know we've had several from different states, different communities come into our school district. And just through informal feedback, I've heard of interesting practices that school districts may employ, interesting programs for kids, that I think it would be of interest for our district to pursue any of those opportunities moving forward. Hey, it is registration. Registration's open as of this week. Right now, we are a five-A school district. If we started school today, we would be one of the largest five-A school districts in Oklahoma with three thousand seven hundred and forty-five students. Of those, about, I don't think fourteen, no fourteen hundred, twelve hundred would be high school students at this time. I think registrations, you guys have good numbers today, Terry?
Three thousand nine hundred and forty-one left.
Okay. All right. So yeah, a few people come through today.
Yeah.
Woo! All right. Hey, we're beginning to hit our limits, the class size limits at Woodland Canyon and Trail. Jennifer is fonging at the bit to make some appointment placement decisions. And I am ready to start getting that stuff done as well. Garfield third grade is nearing capacity. Once we get these numbers kind of finalized and we start to see that we're going to hit more limits across the district, we'll know whether we can start hiring assistants or if we need to be shuffling teachers around from low-population schools to higher-population schools to make sure that we're serving our community at the best ability to our knowledge. Now, registration center is open until the twenty-fourth. I think our two barriers right now we're running into are vaccines, giving kids the vaccines that they need, our parents giving those children their vaccines, that's their vaccines to start school, and then a proof of residency. For a number of reasons, we just have a lot of folks that just are doing the registration process but then not providing us proof of residency, which could be a utility bill or just something that verifies that they are living at the address they say, so we can verify that they're enrolled in the right and correct school in the neighborhood. So if we get a lot of buy-in from our community, this process will go a lot faster. One of the things we are doing as a district is in September, we're going to get together with Terry and her team and talk with, you know, our principals, again, about our registration process, how it's going after this first, my first registration cycle of superintendent is concluded. As a parent of three students, one is brand-new to the district, I have some questions myself on the registration. I have a high school student who's going to be a junior, eighth grade student, and then a student joining the pre-K team. So I think I've hit all of the different levels between schedule pickup to vaccines to proof of residency. The online process worked really smoothly once I remembered that I can't log in as administrator, I have to log in as a parent. And then I had to remember my parent password. But it was pretty easy to call down there and get some help from our registration team on that. And I made sure to tell them, register me as a parent, no, as a superintendent. I think they were more polite when I told them that, from that point on. So I do want to talk to you a little bit about OSSA reclassification. There's been a little news in daily Oklahoma about this. And I've had some questions in our community about this. Punk City is going to remain six-A too. And, but the one positive aspect of that is our district grew this past year. Currently, we're the twenty-ninth largest school district in Oklahoma. In six-A, there are thirty-two. That is the top thirty-two largest schools in Oklahoma. I've included a chart there so you can kind of see where we compare and line up with the other communities. In six-A, I didn't include all the way into number one, but I just wanted to give you kind of the neighboring schools. If you notice that thirty-three, that thirty-two, thirty-three, that is the break-off between going from six-A to five-A. So Tallahassee is the largest five-A school district in Oklahoma, where Muskogee is the smallest six-A school district in Oklahoma for the next two school years. You'll see the ADM, that's the average daily membership of those school districts. You can see where Punk City's is thirteen hundred eighty-eight point two-seven. We increased seventy point seven-one on our average daily membership. And then you can see where that compares with other school districts. I think it's of note, you can see there that Piedmont, I should have put where Piedmont was last year, but they were one of the larger five-A schools and had some considerable growth. That's a suburb outside of Oklahoma City. And you can see kind of some shrinkage there in Midwest City and Lawton, Booker T. Washington there. It's kind of interesting to see how all, most of the six-A schools did see an increase. But I was kind of encouraged with where our numbers were and how we encouraged. I think we're firmly entrenched in six-A. I get a lot of comments in the public, oh, if we were five-A, we'd be much more competitive. And I don't know if that would be accurate. I think we are firmly entrenched in six-A, so we should just embrace the six-A culture and lifestyle and just be competitive wherever we're at. Careful for what you wish for sometimes is what I would say. And I think you might understand a little bit about that. I think I've talked a little bit about this in my memos each week, but I just want to make sure that this stays our focus for this school year. Talking to our directors and principals, the three things emerged in all of this. The first, and it really boiled down to Navy season. It's so cliche, but it, I mean, exactly what they talked. The first thing that all of our principals talked to me about and our directors, even our parents, is just attendance. We're having a tough time getting kids to show up to school. We're having a hard time with staff being in schools where they need to be. And that's just hard with when you have to have long-term subs or trying to find subs or trying to find coverage for kids. The old school system suffers if people aren't there. And that's why the less kids in the classroom, teachers in the room, you know, principals where they need to be, coaches what they're doing. It just really short-changes the experience for our students and our performance. So we're going to be really tracking attendance data, really trying to make sure that we know who our students are who are having attendance issues. Usually, there's a root cause to that that is past what the school can do. But hopefully, we have the resources available that we can connect them with places to see, help them get their children to school and be successful in the classroom. Christie's been doing a great job putting stuff on social media about attendance matters. And it's just, it's just crazy the data about, you know, if you have a child in elementary school that's missing just even thirty minutes to an hour a day and how that magnifies and compounds by the time they get to a senior in high school, how much education learning time that they've missed. And I understand too, there's, you know, an attendance issue for a pre-K student is a lot different than an attendance issue for an eighteen-year-old student at the high school and who's that responsibility falls on. So our principals have a tough job to navigate that. But I think we've got some great partners in our community with grand mental health, a lot of internal support with counselors. I think this board's done a great job in making sure that we're staffed up with getting a counselor every site this school year. I think that just speak volumes of what we're trying to do. Which leads me into our second thing that came out was just behaviors that we're running into. And it's just, a lot of it is just, you know, students during lockdown lost, lost structure. And last year, if you remember, was really our first year, past COVID protocols, past quarantines, and, but the behaviors are still there. This board's responded, like I said, with the counselors, our HR and principals have been really working hard on identifying individuals that can be counselors in our buildings. It doesn't stop just with counselors, but I think there's a lot of different tools in our tool belt that we need to be able to access to be able to help address some of those behaviors and help those kids see success. We want them to be in school, we want them to see success. And I think this board shares that same common value. And then the last thing is culture and climate. I'm a little bit competitive and I really do want Punk City Public Schools to be the best place to live and work at in Oklahoma. But I think that we got a lot of work to do to get to that point. I think we're doing a lot of good things, but I don't think we're there yet. I don't think you'll ever get there. I think that drive and that passion to make sure that we're, one, you're making a living wage, but two, that you really feel like you're part of a bigger process, that you're an important part of that process, and that your kids are seeing success. At the end of the day, we should be putting kids that are seeing success each and every day in our schools. So that is a little bit about the three, uh, three things that we're going to be focused on this school year as we start on August twenty-fourth. I do want to talk a little bit, a little encouraging district valuation trends. We met with our financial advisor on Friday just to help educate myself and Erica, Brendan knew all this stuff, but just to help us get to familiar with some of our numbers. If you know our district valuation trends, NESSS valuations is what our district uses to address bill levies for our bond issues and basically how we're going to fund our sinking fund, the bank or bond payments. If you look at the last twenty-seven years of Punk City's growth, we've experienced about three point three five percent growth rate. However, in the last five years, I think an encouraging sign of our local economy is about a five percent growth rate. I kind of provided a little look back here of what those numbers look like of our NESSS valuation. You know, our district's promise was always to have a twenty-two mill, well, I mean, when we did our last bond issue, we've always tried to maintain twenty-two mills. With our district valuation increasing, if you look at last year's, we had a three, three point one percent approximately increase, which a lot of districts did not experience. Twenty-two, twenty-three, Punk City had about a twelve point seven percent increase. Now, our financial advisor couldn't tell us what happened in Punk City that caused that, nor did I, nor could I pick out anything. Either the refinery did something of significant investment or, you know, there was a new pipeline or something that came through that Cali missed in the newspaper, I guess. But it's an encouraging sign of the local economy when your district valuation is increasing about five percent or averaging five percent growth over the last five years. Now, it's not anywhere near what the suburbs of Oklahoma City and Tulsa experience, but for an outlying rural area like that, I think that's something that Punk City should be proud of moving forward. Just some key dates to just keep mindful of. New teachers, like I said, arrive tomorrow. They are going to start some intensive onboarding. We've got a differentiated approach this year. And I was kind of educating a little bit more on that this morning by Bill and Jennifer. But all of our certified employees do arrive Friday, August twenty-eighth or August eighteenth. I hope they don't come on the twenty, I'm kind of scared. Hope everyone comes on the eighteenth, please. Make sure they get that. We, they'll be at the concert hall at eight AM. We'll have our kickoff assembly. We'll introduce all the directors, new administrators, and then just kind of give an overview of some of the new things that are coming this year. And then support employees come the following Monday on the August twenty-first. Hope Jeff has all of his support employees and he's all filled up. And then we're ready to roll the first day of school on August twenty-fourth. And I did talk to Randy in transportation today and he assures me we're not going to have any kids dropped off at ten PM like Louisville Public School District. That we should be getting kids home well before then. But we, I think everyone in this office, I think myself as a parent is very excited for August twenty-fourth to get here. So I cannot wait to get those kids back in school. But I'll take any questions from the board. I know there's a lot at you.
On the Garfield Elementary, that one that's at capacity, that's just a single classroom?
Yeah, that's correct. We have one section of Garfield third grade right now. And it's near capacity. I think there's still three slots left.
Would there be a, have to make it a second?
We would, I, I mean.
You would be able to find a teacher?
We wouldn't be able to find a teacher, but you know, if we didn't have enough over at Lincoln, for example, and we can use a teacher, we can do that. We can also do class size assistance. But we just want to be real careful that we're threading the needle there and making those appropriate staffing decisions.
I have a question I have.
Thanks.
I advise the consent agenda. A motion is required to be approved of the consent agenda as indicated before as amended. Board members may however call for a separate vote on a or all. I insist on the consent agenda. Looks like we have the minutes from July seventeenth, regular board of education meetings and the contracts and everything that's running through.
Second. Second, Nancy.
For reference, Anna, we talked about all these in the finance committee. If there are no problems with the given.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
This is Trey. This is Eric.
Hi.
This is action number six. Action items chosen to acquire. Rule one, conservative action. We follow the district financial laws. You can see that all of us are there.
No, we're just being.
Through T.
Nothing's kind of quiet. I don't know why. Something went on.
They went well.
Probably warming up.
Everybody's working out.
Tom, I'd like to approve.
Second.
Tom made the motion to approve. Second by Robert. Any questions or discussion for Jennifer?
Yeah, it's been quiet, not alive. What's going on? They went well.
Probably warming up.
Everybody's working out. I'm going to motion approve.
Second.
I'm going to make the motion to approve. Second by Robin, any discussion of questions? Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
This is Ryan. Hi, this is Trey. This is everything. I continue.
Hi.
Item two, consider taking action on the school side, statutory regulation applications of library media services for investment school. Garfield, Liberty, Roosevelt, B and L, Union Elementary. Jennifer, I can answer this. Any questions, everybody has to answer this. Or I'll entertain a motion today.
Now, we've presented.
And this is the same one we do every year?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
And I'm going to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Robin, any questions or discussion? Or Jennifer? Here it is, call for the vote.
Mrs. Ryan, hi. Mr. Trey, this is Ever Sheen, hi. Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Item three is consider taking action on following contracts and agreements. I'm going to read each one of these, but I think we want to vote on them all. So, A is consider taking action on hiring following individuals with adult features as specified. Mariah Ropini, business education. Alicia Tico, elementary education. Taylor Wetzel, elementary education. Andrew Burris, elementary math. Patricia Davis, biology. Polly Wagner, history. Leslie M. history, government, and economics. B is an agreement with AFS, intercultural programs for 23, 24 academic year for exchange student. This is exchange student. C, agreement on chatterbox speech therapy LLC for online speech and limited evaluation of teletherapies services. Any questions here to answer the questions about that? E, quote from Index Incorporated, possible to install intercom system at Union Elementary. Jason, I'm going to ask you to answer questions about this SO3 program. E, quote from GoNoodle for site licensees for SEL curriculum, superdual software, and total cost is $15,990. Title four funds, Terry, go vote.
I would like to have a separate discussion on I to B and not vote on it with the others for the time being. I'll talk about that in a minute.
Your proposal from Gravity Gaming, like byte speed or gaming computers. Place the esports lab, along with three, total cost of $16,000, $6,7,800.
I have two big items, we have the new site.
The new step lab for Anderson?
Yes. Unless we're going to set them up for?
I would, I mean, we'll set them up.
Probably take a little bit.
Yeah, we'll take a little bit, and then we can get there.
Oh, yeah. I don't think he's been able to, another part of the skill.
No, no, I'll go.
Any discussion of questions about F? Item number D, agreement with Phil's Public Schools to provide services. Phil's Public Schools agrees to pay now services out of contract for $14,990. Psychology, the presents. Discussion, discussion. H, contract of Oklahoma Career Tech for 23, 24 school year. I, proposal from Orion Security Solutions for renewal of software licensing for certified cameras. Total cost for renewal is $1,868. J, agreement with Solen Health LLC for ASL interpreter. Total cost is $6,570. K, agreement with United to need action building head start to provide early childhood services. Any questions? L, terms of tele services assignment through local vision as a minimum agreement with Solen Health LLC to provide consumer psychologists for 23, 24 school year. And Amy is here to answer any questions about that if you have any.
Make a motion to approve all. E?
Second.
I think there's a question on table for the second, that must go on to approve remaining subject D, school. Second by Robin. Any questions or discussion before we call to the board?
We discussed all these and gave them to the finance committee. We had no problem.
Nice enough, Terry wants to talk about E, or we?
Yeah.
All right. Mrs. Trey?
Hi.
Mrs. Ever Sheen, hi. Mr. Naza?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
All right, and now we are going to, I'll entertain a motion to discuss, engage a motion to discuss, quote from GoNoodle for site licenses for SEL curriculum, superdual software.
Okay, my comments on A, obviously, I've had my eyes opened a little bit, and I was not aware of the SEL comments, and there seems to be a concern in the community, and that's okay, I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying it's bad. I just am not personally aware of the situation enough, so I would like to make a motion that we table it. Not that we get rid of it, but we table it until the next month's meeting, and so we can have further discussions among the board members on the value of GoDoodle.
One second.
Do we want Terry to come up?
I was going to say.
No, let's take one.
Not when he tabled.
I think that, okay, so right now, a motion, I don't have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table. So, E.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have to table it, and he seconded that we table it. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Okay, I have a question, or another question or discussion, I think we're going to, we can talk about it a little bit, and I don't recall there, this is something that they've already done, and I would ask Terry to come up and talk about it a little bit before we make the decision. Just because, what do we talk about? It's something, GoDoodle is something that is used every day in our elementary schools.
It focuses on kinesthetic learning, and so there's a lot of movement in it, a lot of singing, that sort of thing. Our principals went to some sessions with NADSP this summer, and the session was talking about this SuperDoodle program where it focused on what they felt was character building with connections, choice, coping skills, creativity, compassion, curiosity, competence, and collaboration, something that they were very excited about, something that they felt that they could use in their morning assemblies. And so, they talked to us about funding, and so we looked at Title Four, and in our Title Four budget, we are, we do have to spend 20% of that budget on safe and healthy schools, something that goes under safe and healthy schools, and this does go under that because it is about helping students with their coping skills and should help with behaviors, should help with just a lot of different things that some students may suffer with, may not come to school with. Not all students come from, where they do learn these sorts of things. So, again, this is, you know, this comes down to the board. The board does have to vote whether they feel like this is something the kids should need.
So, all of that from schools to elementary is also?
Yes. Correct. And they were very excited about it, asked about funding, so, you know, I looked into it. GoDoodle is free to all teachers. This is a more specific curriculum that pinpoints, it has, you know, all their little emojis or their little characters that they use in the GoDoodle, but they are teaching lessons about connections, making connections, coping skills for students, creativity, having confidence, those sorts of things. So, it is a series of web-based videos, games, and activities that focus on short bursts of physical exercise in the classroom, and, you know, again, the board is, has to make that decision, so.
Terry, I'm a little confused. Is GoDoodle something separate from SuperDoodle?
Correct.
And is SuperDoodle really the problem?
Correct.
That's on the agenda.
GoDoodle?
GoDoodle, then talk about the equity aspect or any of that.
No. It's about, it helps like with transitions from one thing to another, gives kids brain breaks, helps them to exercise, you know, get a little exercise, brain break, that sort of thing, and a GoDoodle created SuperDoodle.
So, it's really SuperDoodle is the discussion?
Correct.
Not GoDoodle.
Correct.
Any other questions for the board? Call for the vote on the motion to table item E. Any questions or discussion? Call for the vote, the motion to table the site.
Mrs. Ever Sheen? I don't have any questions to table. I'm outside, I can get more information on that.
So, you're voting, yes?
Go ahead and table it. I'm sorry, table, yes, yes, okay, I guess. Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mrs. Ryan? No. Mrs. Trey? On. I'm sorry, table, yes, yes, okay, I guess. Mr. Naza?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mrs. Ryan? Mrs. Trey? On.
I have four motions you can vote and convene an executive session involving purposes to discuss the cost of termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel they touch, detailed personnel report, to discuss negotiations, to discuss the purchase or disposal of a vote. Make a motion? Make a motion?
Second.
The second by the board. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Ever Sheen? Hi. Mr. Trey?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Executive session.
Sorry, I love you.
Return of open session. Decided by board president, the executive session were kept by the board president's clerk and remain confidential. Item seven, consider taking action on recommendation for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment personnel for the attached detailed report. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve item seven? Did you second it?
No, she was just looking at.
Did you second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Do you second? Any of this?
I thought you said second.
Hearing none, call for the vote.
Mrs. Trey? Hi. Mrs. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Naza?
Hi.
Mrs. Ever Sheen? Hi.
I have eight, consider taking action on a negotiated agreement with Palm City Public Schools Association of Classroom Teachers ACT for the 23th year from school year pending, ratification by the ACT. Take a motion? I have a motion. Nancy's made a motion to.
To what?
Do you second it? Any discussion or question? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Naza?
Hi.
Mrs. Ever Sheen? Hi.
Item seven. Do we have any new decisions, Anna?
No.
I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Move.
Second.
All right, motion by Don, seconded by Robin.